Wednesday, October 30th, 2013, and now come to order. We'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, meeting have been called to order. This time we have recognition of visitors. We have first on the agenda there Stoner and Maladino.
And we've come to pass two meetings and sometimes got the problem there with the asset for filling for the lots. And we had the surveyor come out and we took the marking board for where Paul's property and where Benner's property is and where things are. And it appeared like there could be another private lane put up through there. And appreciate that consideration and what must be done to have to happen or might they get things resolved? Do we have a number of neighbors involved in trying to make everyone satisfied and see if there's a solution?
Well, one more time, as much as we've tried to work around this, the Township Road ends exactly where it ends. Anything beyond that for a resultment, the answer is between you and your neighbors. If you come to some kind of agreement or something out there that would be workable, and I don't know what that is, or if you're going to submit another plan or et cetera, you need to do something and refer it back to the Planning Commission. But I can't offer a decision on something I don't know nothing about, or neither I believe either of the other board can, and I don't think Solicitor Wagner would recommend that we do that either. It is, I've had phone calls to come out, to take a look, to do this, do that, and offer comments. I can't come out there and offer comments without being ended up misquoted on something and cannot offer quota for how you people resolve that issue. You've got to understand that. Township Road ends right where it ends. Nine hundred and seventy-five feet from the center of Coming Back In Faculty Road is the end of it. I went out and put a little white mark in the road area the other day at the end of Township Road.
Henry, can I ask a question about where did that mark end up being?
That's just about close to, if you take a look at Liquid Fuels, it says it's .18 and the dedicated deed or when that was recorded for Rook Road is, gives it in footage, nine hundred and seventy-five. If you do it with the .18 and the nine seventy-five, it comes within a couple of feet of each other.
Where's that point at, Rook Road?
Okay, roughly in line with the tree lines or within line of the mailboxes there that goes back to Mr. Benner's place.
Well, we were up at the courthouse and pulled off a plot and it shows the road actually going around the corner and stopping at the stake of Mr. Benner's property and my property.
Which, 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 which recording? Well, that is, that was done, whoever decided to do that, we have those plans here too. This was off of a plan submitted by Mr. Stoner for the development of those lots back there, one of which where you live. But it says Township Road ends. Last month, we hassled that same thing around. We had a minutes from Charlie Cook that he knew, that's part of the minutes, that he knew that the Township Road did not go around that bend.
Well, then why is it recorded and marked that way then?
Well, that was, I don't know, it wasn't supervisor that. Didn't know how that plan got through there, how that got done. But it shows it going around a bend, which it truly don't. And, and it doesn't, and, and it's...
Yeah, but that says it does.
Well, I understand that says it does, but it, it doesn't.
Well, according to you it don't, but the paper says it does. Now, which do we believe, the paper or what?
Well, the early recording of the Township Road, the very inception, when that was decided to be a Township Road, it was recorded up New Bloomfield, it's nine hundred and seventy foot from out there, it's exactly where the white dot is. It don't go any farther, it can't go around the bend. The one, the .18 amountage that's listed by Liquid Fuels that we get paid for corresponds with exactly what was recorded originally, long before this ever come along. Long before this ever come along.
So you say that that, that piece of paper doesn't count then?
Well, I'm telling you the Township Road don't go around as that says. And we had a minutes by the surveyor that it didn't, that it didn't, and he knew that it didn't go around.
Well, then it shouldn't have been marked and recorded that way.
Well, I'm not gonna, we can go over that and over it. I'm telling you where the Township Road ends and what we have.
All right, well, what this all comes down to basically at the end of the day is how many people are allowed to use this particular road? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
All right, the way the township regulations read, right now you're allowed, what, three families or three individuals?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we make all this horseshit go away and make it simple? Why don't we write something that allows us to add one more person? In this particular case, but not anyplace else in the township, there's been so many mistakes made in the past, let's correct them. That would be the simplest thing to do. I don't want my front yard and everything else torn up out there. And if we put another road in, it's not going to line up where it's already there, and that's not going to make... Why don't we just, why don't we just say we can add one more person and be done with it?
But who's going to tear what up is what I don't understand. When the road is only thirty-three foot that goes up there, I don't understand that.
Well, what are you going to do? It's grass and trees. Now, you're going to have to, you're going to have to go down and put a base in and start all over. It's grass there now, and Mr. Benner has already put, had a contractor put drainage in to take care of the water problems. That's all going to have to be moved.
Well, if you take a look at all the plans and everything that's there, and I'm not going to get argumental about it, and I've asked everybody to come in, sit down, take a look at the plans. Where the Township Ed Roads, it make, Road Ends, it turns a right-hand turn there. It's a thirty-three foot right-of-way up across the end of your property to the east, thirty-three feet. And that's on the existing road, and, and as I've heard Chuck himself say, that Mr. Taylor said, well, part of the right-of-way over there with the falls is put the porch on. The right-of-way is clear over there. If you're more than thirty-three feet over there, there's no need to get in anybody else's grass or whatnot unless someone grants somebody a fifty-foot right-of-way or more than the thirty-three. It's not there. It's not there. It is not there.
There was a seventy-three plan, I believe, when we built their place and had theirs, and it says a Township Road goes to your property. And if the Township Road does not go to their property, they sort of don't even have access. They do, but, and by, I don't know, we just don't want to try to go there, but the seventy-three plans have shows that it goes to their property and also that they have a hundred few road frontages that would take it up around. And with all the controversy, you're not making an exception, that you're going to have to start making exceptions for everybody. But I think it was a unique situation, given the past and the history, and you weren't on this board then, and people were and did approve it. And it seems like we're erasing what was approved and erasing what happened in seventy-three. Because if the Township Road doesn't go back to your land, it's like, well, who owns that from the end where your township ends to where his land starts?
Well, I think it's very close to his property line, if I'm not mistaken. You go out there, that could be, that could be real close there to his property.
That's why I wanted you to come out, because there's a twenty-seven foot difference from where your end...
Well, I could give you the length of Township Road, but I'm not going to get into pointing out where people's property lines are.
But he has, we have, we have plans where his land is, and we had a surveyor come out, showed everything, and...
Just, just to alleviate your problem there, that road has been in use for seventy-five years. There have been five tenants in the business scale, this is Brooks, property in the old part of town. None have ever objected to where the road was. And I have backed Kevin Rook, who's been into the blacktoping business one time. He bought a blacktop machine, and he blacktoped a hundred feet of that plus their backup spot. That was been, it has been accepted for at least seventy-five years or probably more. I don't think the road should be changed. It is there, and it's been accepted. As far as that, from the stakes out to the road, we have taken responsibility for that. We have cleaned the junk away, the cars away, the glass away. We have mowed it for the past forty years. I see no reason for anybody to come in now and say that that's not mine. I purchased that land to get a private driveway in. I could have put that private driveway at any spot along that hundred-foot road. I chose to put it between Boomer Mullins and myself to keep it on the high ground so that the water wouldn't come down and wash it away and snow problems. There is no reason to change that road.
And we don't have to if we allow, if we want to accept it. You know, what's the big deal? You have one extra family.
When we lived down in Lower Paxton Township, there were so many mistakes with the surveying. They bulldozed over concrete markers that were the survey stakes. They had to do variances for almost every property in our development. And that was a huge township. And if they can do it for almost an entire development, I don't know why Penn Township can't do it for one road, for four people to be on the same road, and just leave it that way.
Henry, just to back up where we started, the township asked Charlie Cook, Act One, to bend that road to give Mr. Benner frontage on a Township Road. He was asked to do that.
And when was this done, Chuck?
That was in '01.
In '01, asked, asked Mr. Benner to bend that road?
No, you're not listening.
Charlie Cook, Act One, to bend the road to give Mr. Benner frontage on the Township Road. That's how that came about.
Okay, now a question. I may call Mr. Schaefer sitting there, you were supervisor that time. Where would the township ask the, a surveyor ever to bend the road around here to show it being Township Road?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not?
And secondly, the quals have enough, if you would see their lot line now, they have enough land to have their own private entrance going in there without getting onto the private road that we have now.
I said we was putting another one in, but we decided not to do that. We'd rather keep it the way it is and just...
Well, right now, the property line comes right down the middle of the road, so there's plenty of room for the free old people to get in there if they have to.
We'd just like to get it resolved, Henry, it's costing us money.
Chuck, it's something you have to resolve between, between the landowners.
That's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do. We're, we're asking you to, to help us here.
Well, I can't tell you, or you, or you, or you what to do to retell what's done to.
You don't have to. What we're doing is we're asking you to make an exception. And we can leave everything exactly the way it is.
If your brother's asked for that exception and has to go back to the Planning Commission, because they'd have to change it. Planning Commission wants to, the one that controls and, and sets it up as to how many private right-of-ways can be on the road.
They can make an exception?
Well, I'm not saying they can make an exception, they have to change their rules and regs where we're at.
But do you have the authority to make an exception if you want to?
I would ask Solicitor Wagner to...
We've talked about this ad nauseam. In 2001, somebody presented a plan. They asked for approval of the plan. They asked for approval based upon the regulations that existed in 2001. That plan was approved, that plan was recorded, that plan was honored. For whatever reason now, without getting into the motivations, someone doesn't like the plan that was presented in 2001. Thirteen years later, twelve years later, somebody now wants to change the rules. If this was anticipated in 2001, someone could have said, hey, how about allowing us to have four lots? The plan was presented with a note that this twenty-foot right-of-way would be the joint responsibility of lots one, two, and three, three lots. That's what was permitted, that was permitted under the ordinance. It's still that way under the ordinance. The ordinance predated 2001. I'm not sure exactly when the three lots off of a private right-of-way was implemented as part of a regulation and ordinance, but it's been that way for a long time.
But them are the three lots.
Sure, but now somebody wants to put a fourth access.
No, 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 the quails are the ones that are being the problem because they want to use the same road that us three have been using.
The quals were never brought up at that meeting. I never, that was never part of my subject of...
Nothing's being added to them three.
Yeah.
Them three that are listed there, the one is mine, the one is dismissed, and the one is...
He comes over here.
Sandersons are on top of the hill with the hanger.
What you're referring to is that these people here have always used this right-of-way to get in there where it shows the pull-off. Now they want to exempt that, Rich, from what I understand. This comes down, comes down across here wherever it's at. I don't know. I know that our township line is, is surveyed right at there, put a white mark there. So you would have that one, you would have the two, you would have this three up here, you would have this one up here. If they say they're going to eliminate that and move it over there, then it would depend wherever that road comes out, whether it's on Mr. Benner's ground, not on Mr. Benner's ground, I don't know, have no idea. You would still have one, two, three there and still require another. I have no idea how they plan on bringing the road out. I tried healing this thing up when we paved Rook Road to find a solution so that I could pave around on what it says Township Road. And after I spent hours and hours and days of it, I found out that what showed on the plan is not Township Road, and I couldn't pave it, Mr. Maladino. I tried my best. I even had a letter of request from you, Mrs. Smith, which I still have to see if we can get out if we had extra material run over there. And knew that I was going in on a twenty-foot private right-of-way that's supposed to have a recorded maintenance agreement with the three lots back there. Thus, it put the township in a position, we could not do anything.
This is Mr. Benner, this is the quals.
And I explained that to you. Done the best I could to get that paved around there.
This is Rook Road here, this is Township Road.
And if supervisors said in the past that the surveyor was supposed to do that, I find it hard to believe that supervisors would tell someone that's laying out a developer's plan to violate where the end of the Township Road is to take it here and show it here. I didn't hear that from Charlie here two weeks ago, or before. Charlie said he knew the Township Road didn't go around there. As to why it's on the plan, I don't know. I have no idea why it's on the plan.
That's what he told me.
Well, then you would have to go back to the supervisors who were present that time. I think it was Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Benner, and probably Mr. Robb at that time.
Was it recorded and accepted or not?
Never finished.
But there's never mention about the quals property at that time.
But they used that road, Chuck, long before you ever done that around there.
But there was never any mention about the quals property as being part of the subdivision.
Well, it was one matter if it was someone using this private road or one time you guys tried to say with the public road because of the way it was recorded. You've got to make up your mind what you want, private road or public road. They used that for as long as I can remember, those people going in there.
Well, the point is, there's nobody there now. Nobody lives in the darkened part.
Well, it doesn't matter, there may be somebody live there.
Well, they don't have to go up that way, they have a driveway on the other side.
Well, that, that's a matter of, that's been an argument, that's an opinion, by golly, that they got that over there.
Well, they do, they've got four cars parked in it now.
Okay. So they don't have one over there, they haven't used that, they always used that house around the other way. I think the other was one went into the trailer.
And nobody's been there in, I don't know how long.
And that house has been there, that house was there long before our property was out. And, and Sanderson's house. So that property is part of the three parties that are allowed to use that road.
But the parties used that road.
But you look at where the stakes are now. You look at what, you come out and take a look at where those stakes are. Their property extends over into that road, which means that they have a legal right to use that road.
So I, I'm assuming what you're telling me, you're going to shift it. Now, I don't know whose ground it's going to get to if you shift it to.
But why shift it? What's the purpose of shifting it?
Why not just allow, I, I don't understand why you can't make any exception. Other places do this, you know, be, you know, like they say in the vernacular, man up. Do something productive for the people that live there that need to have something resolved. We've been living there since 2002, and I'm sick and tired of having this always coming up. Every time anything happens, it's ridiculous. They plowed that road for the longest time, now all of a sudden, nobody can plow it. I, I mean, I first bought there, I specifically asked both Chuck and Todd, who built that house, where the Township Road ended, because I'm a nurse, I got to get the heck out of there. I got to be able to get to work when I need to get to work. And they told me the road ended where that barn is. So that's a heck of a lot different from any of those places. And I, we need something resolved. I don't care...
Well, I'll be glad to show you the original recording where the Township Road ends. The one, the original one where Rook Road was established, I'll be glad to show that to you.
But that doesn't solve the problem.
Yeah, it doesn't solve the problem. You're, you're, I'm not going to argue no more about it, Rich, yeah, I have any more comments about it.
The difficulty, folks, is in 2001, a plan came in here...
Yeah, yeah, I know all that. But that's then and now is now, we got to probably solve the problem now.
Okay, so, so, so what you're saying is, if someone complies with regulations in 2001, and we lived by them for twelve years, now we're supposed to suddenly say they don't apply because something's happened that changed something from what it was in 2001? That's not the responsibility of the township. If the applicant wants to come in with a plan to change it, allow him to do that. We've been talking about that for months. But suddenly, the burden gets shifted on the, on the township for complying with the regulations when there was the request in 2001 to so comply with those regulations.
Yeah, but did anybody ever comply to the regulations since they've been, since they've been passed?
Yeah, because you're only allowed to have three lots off of one driveway.
Well, you might be able to have three lots, but there have been a hell of a lot of people using it besides that. Do you enforce that? Who, who is going to know? We're so damn far out there in the boon docks, nobody knows that there's goosegum we're going.
So what I'm supposed to tell these folks is, in the application of regulations in a township, you look to see where people live and, and how far out they are in the boon docks as to whether or not regulations should apply to those folks.
We're just asking for an exception to the regulation in this particular case because of all the problems that have been done in the past.
And the applicant in 2001 should have anticipated that and applied for that at that time. Didn't.
Why would you think that that property that was already there, why would Chuck even think that that would be included in his property subdivision? The three properties are our property, Sanderson's, and the top of the hill. And what the heck, what's, I don't understand what the problem is.
The problem, the, the problem is, the problem is, it was conveniently not part of it because it would have required paving. And we wanted to avoid the paving obligation, so we create what we've created and got passed in 2001. Now we want to add something else to once again get around the regulations and not have to pave, which would have been required in 2001. Simply stated.
Why would paving be required?
Because more than three lots, you got to have a paving. It has to be on a street, a minor street.
I don't want any traffic up there without paving because when the top part of that field was opened up, mud come down over there and flooded my entire driveway with four inches of slop and mud and grit. And I had to clean it up and pay to have it removed. I'm not going through that again. I accepted responsibility for that, and I didn't ask anybody else to pay or cover up for me. I paid the bill. I'm not going to do that again. If that road is new, perhaps there's other arrangements.
Township's not planning to move it.
No.
Trust me, we're not going to do anything up there.
Well, the Prescriptive Rights Act prevents them from moving it unless it's township or utilities.
I don't, you know, we don't want anybody coming down there.
Which lot do you, which lot?
Nineteen Rook, right at the end of Rook Road. My driveway starts right at the end of this.
And Mr. Benner's.
One, two, three, which one?
No, no, those.
They're right in, they're right off the end of Rook Road. Right off the end of Rook Road.
Mr. Benner's right here, he comes straight off.
Right here.
Yes.
Who's that?
Lot two's, Mrs. yours?
Who's, who's lot one?
Lot, well, lot one is the big one up here.
Up top.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Well, Mr. Maladino?
And that's the one that Maladino wants to...
Lot three is me.
Okay, you're lot three.
Okay, who's the number one?
Mr. Maladino.
You got to get the plan in mind.
Well, what, and what's Mr. Maladino going to do with that property?
He's trying to get access so he can, so he can do what he wants to do.
What, what do you want to do up there? Wants to put a house up there? What's, what's, what's footnote number one say on this plan as presented by Mr. Stoner and approved? No construction on lot number one. That's the difficulty, folks. We got a plan put in here, we approved it based upon the regulations at that time and the reput, and the, and the representations made. Lot number one, no construction or improvements are on lot number one as a result of this plan. That's how it got approved, that's why it got approved. And now we are, twelve years later, someone's trying to change it to suit themselves.
Well, I ain't trying to change it, I just want to keep it the hell the way it is.
We can't put another, another person on another road because of them then.
And we're not asking, it's, it is what it is.
I'm not asking for it, that's true. I don't want them to come in on our property.
And besides, besides the point, we have to deal with the runoff from a road all the time too.
That's correct, and it's not going to get any better. You start using the road as it is. So you're saying that you want to put another road up there and other people up there. I've been out of your place with all the water down, you've had me to come out, take a look at it in the past. Yes, you had terrible erosion come down off of exactly what we're talking about.
I'm still working on it.
Now you want to put another one up there to make it worse yet.
No, we don't want to, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
He wants to sell the lot up there for housing or something like that. We're going to have two or three more people want to come down that road.
Well, according to what he just said, it's a dead issue. It says on there, it says on there, you can't develop that lot, you can't build it.
I bet you can't.
So then you're, you're stuck.
What's he, why is he trying to...
Mr. Smith, you know, if they...
Put another road that comes out my property.
If they filed, if they filed a plan properly for that lot up there or for what Mr. Maladino wants and shows he's going to come down over the hill, pave that road, make it right, dedicate it to the township, you would probably get that approval without any trouble. Then you could have your other lot up in there, and you would have a Township Road up to there if we're willing to take it over. But that all has to come into play before you can do that. Then that is what I tried to overcome when I tried to pave out around there. Walked into horn and snats.
And if you want to put a, a road in there and Township takes it over, where's all the space to put that road in going to come from?
Well, I think Mr. Stoner has sixty foot up across there, if I recall right from that plan, but that, that's... So we all know where we're at, come on, let's, let's face it. You guys need to resolve it, work it out yourself.
Hey, Rich, what you mentioned there, the note on the plan is, no construction or improvements are proposed on lot one as a result of this plan.
Right, no construction or improvements.
That doesn't say that it can never be any construction on that lot.
No, but if you want to do it, you got to come back with another plan. And what you're trying to do is get us to approve a right-of-way for him without coming back for another plan, so he can then get a building permit and put something up there. That's your provision, Chuck. Honest, I mean, you put that there.
I got it right here.
I know you did. And yet you come in here and do respect and want us to change this to help that gentleman, and I feel bad for them that they can't, but we didn't...
No, it says it's not proposed.
And if you do propose it, then you've got to come back in with a plan to provide access to it. Well...
Well, we don't want some, I don't want them to put in a road. Here on our property, like put a road to go up over.
I've sat with meetings down in Harrisburg over this, I've had countless meetings on it. Everybody knows what needs to be done out there. You know Mr. Maladino in your heart, so does everybody else, I'm sure. You need to resolve the issue out there, you need another plan, you need to do what you're going to do out there in order to comply and put that road in there. And it would be nice to see a paved road up through there, and it'd be nice up there so that they didn't have the water and et cetera coming down it. That's up to you, folks, but you're going to have to submit another plan. And I would recommend, I would recommend that you people work it out and take something back to the Planning Commission to get something that, that makes everybody happy in there.
There's no intentions of putting Township Road up to the top of the hill for development.
It didn't say anything about a development.
Well, if you spend the money to build a Township Road atop the hill, you better get some income someplace.
Okay, Chuck, I know, I understand your views and your opinion, and at this time, I'd like to move on with it. Everybody knows where we're at with this.
So bottom line is, you're saying that anything...
I'm not saying nothing, Chuck, I'll tell you where Township Road ends. Offered a suggestion to you, what... I'll tell you where township road ends, offered a suggestion to you what you could do with the plan, and I'm not gonna take it no farther because I'm not recommending what you people do against each other or each other's land out there. I'm not doing that, and I can't.
You said that we work it out, it's a civil matter, we work it out between us. If it's not, why do the township...
Well, that don't mean it's gonna be granted by the planning commission or anybody else for four lots. You guys need to work that. You're asking me to give a waiver? Just wave my hands and say it all goes away. Can't do that, Chuck. I can give you instances where it wasn't done for me in the township. I'll guarantee you I can give you that. And I begged, held this meeting up for two hours one night. And you know what? Mr. Schaefer, I was bad at him, but he was right and I was wrong.
Oh, my God.
Bob is right on it.
Is this being recorded?
Yes. That, that is a fact. I tried the same thing to do something like this that I didn't have to do, and it was really, it was a silly endeavor. I had to give the 50 foot right away, and I had to give what they done. And it was according to plans and it was right. I enjoyed the argument. But nevertheless, it is the way it is today, and I live with it, don't hurt me at all. So, you know, please, I think Rich has explained it to you about as good as you can get.
So the bottom line is now it all has to go back to the planning commission. Is that, is that the bottom line?
If any change is to be made to what has been recorded
Right.
for the last 12 years, you've gotta bring a plan into the planning commission and go up through the process.
Well, I'm prepared to stop any movement on changing that road over on us.
And that's, and that's exactly why that nobody in the board can make a recommendation to one or two of the landowners on how to resolve the problem. Everybody has a different interest, must all be taken into consideration.
Well, I'm prepared to spend whatever it takes.
And that's why I said earlier the township's not gonna be doing anything.
The road's not gonna be on your property at all. No, it's not. You look at the property, the property line is...
Chuck, you guys, take your argument elsewhere, please. I'd like to move on with the meeting. Spent way too much time, I guess. Okay, hell, move on with the recognition of visitors, please.
Bob Schaefer.
Can't get any better than that.
Mr. Cows.
No.
Okay. Oh, anything else, Mr. Binner?
No, I think we've stopped where we are.
Chuck, anything else? Mr. Fickle?
On the budget meeting, you had, I think the 16th, CC wasn't there. And I bumped into her the next morning, told her it's here, budget meeting. And she made comment. She was told wouldn't make any difference, much difference if she was here or not. Besides, they already had two meetings, and they didn't know anything about it. Can you comment on that?
Well, I can't comment whether she said that or not. She'd have to answer to that herself.
There was one meeting that I know of previous to that that I knew nothing about. And I was told that the budget meeting would not make much sense to me because I was not aware of what had been discussed. That's why I did not attend the budget meeting on the 15th.
I'm just wondering why you weren't part of it.
That's why I was not here.
Okay, well, and back to the other part of the budget meeting, it was not a budget meeting. It was a point of contact, working out with the police on their budget up there, and I invited the other two supervisors, an executive session, if they wished to come, to come to that meeting. Okay? Now, I personally made phone calls and left messages in front of Mr. Carlson and Mr. Pickles to her house and to her cell phone. Okay, for that. Stood right there, made, made those phone calls and left a message, house and phone call in regards to that. Did I not, Clifford?
Yes.
Okay. Then the other time, and I asked Brian, by golly, to try to get in contact. Everybody is busy, and the whole nine yards. It was something that normally the point of contact would work out with the police on the police budget, et cetera. I invited the other two supervisors alone to take a look at it. It was not the advertised budget meeting. So whatever was said or whatever was done, you know, and did I not, Brian, asked you to try to contact CC in regards to, to this meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So we made every effort. The budget meeting that she came to or didn't come to that night, I don't know why she didn't come to it, if it was because of that or whatever, that was, that was supposed to be, the word was supposed to get to her. I don't have time to contact CC, which I do most of the time, the messages, and, and I think the one that I left a message to, we did get a response back. The other one that we talked about, I'm not sure about whether the contact was made or not, but I do know that I contacted and made that call to the house and to the cell phone. And so if she choose not to come to the meeting that night, make a statement like that, whether she did or not, I don't know.
The earlier meeting was on October the 9th, that I was not contacted about in no way, shape, or form, and knew nothing about until I was in Penn Township Park with my cousin and ran into Mr. McGuire, who was surprised to see me. Why, if I was here for the meeting? Because my cousin was very upset that she was holding me up from business, and I said, no, you're not, because I knew nothing about that.
Was it an advertised meeting?
Pardon?
Was it an advertised meeting?
Executive sessions on, on, on regards to legal issues, the, the, uh, taking a look at the budget down there with the borough and whatnot, and we can take those type of things and look at them and, and ask about them. I had the meeting, I said, if you wanna do an executive session, I'll invite you to it. You can take a look at those financial matters and et cetera. And also, one of those, if I'm not at the same time, was an executive session, not only for budget, but that was for the Cohen group on the cable franchise, which strictly was a legal issue, one of those.
Were they mentioned at the last meeting when it was open that there was an executive session held on such and such a date?
Were they mentioned held? Were they put on the agenda?
I don't believe so. I don't believe the ninth was.
And there was more than one supervisor present at that meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Brian, Brian was attended that meeting in here in regards to that.
Thank you.
See, I didn't mean to put one hot seat.
No, that's all right. No, it's important.
With three supervisors, and here, they always had meetings, and I was just, I thought maybe that you were sick or something. I just found it amazing you weren't there, and didn't know that you...
Okay, then in regards to, to open it up at the beginning of the meeting, I should've announced there was an executive session held in 10:23 on personnel, so I don't forget it. Okay?
Was CC invited to that?
And that was in regard, that was in regards to hiring the new treasurer. We'd brought her back in for another interview.
What was the date of that?
Next town?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Johnson.
Nothing at this time.
Stanley? Craig?
Very quickly, just to thank you for your unmoist support, Dr. Resin, and supervising the township. Should there be anything you need from the county, any of us, please, we'll have to speak to you.
Good, thank you, Greg.
Yes, Stanley?
I guess I do have a question. What do you call it, AED machines?
Pardon?
AED machines, that's for the heart attack people. Can you explain to me why we don't have them in a police car since we have 24/7 coverage? We carry those, ambulance doesn't carry one, am I correct?
We do.
You do now?
Yes.
Okay. I heard them call the other day for the fire company to come to the heart attack and hurt. Police were already there, early, they should've been. They never showed up. Thanks, okay. It's interesting, the call. But anyhow, I just can't understand why the police car doesn't have one that they can carry right on duty when they have to call the fire company to bring one of those out?
Just, the request for the fire company on that specific instance was, it was a Marysville call, that Marysville ambulances did not get out on.
Correct.
Our crew responded either six or nine minutes into the call, and it was to expediently get people there, and it had been upgraded from a breathing problem's call to a cardiac arrest, and it was for the additional breathing help, get the patient out of the, out of the house, help the suit on, et cetera. It wasn't specifically for the AED.
You guys do carry... But still, I mean, put this car up.
I can't answer that.
Well, I, I hear you guys being dispatched, sometimes you go for a skinned knee. He's telling me you guys need to go for this heart attack. Just sometimes it doesn't make sense to my head, I hear, you know what I'm saying? You guys get, I, I hear you guys go sometimes if a nurse will come.
And if, and if, and if we're requested to go by an ambulance, if they want us there or anything, that, we, we definitely go. I believe it was a breathing problem, I think it was. Yeah. And our officer was never told it was a, it was changed to a...
Yeah, you notice some of that tape, too. 'Cause I didn't think she went. She, you know, you notice some of that tape, too. You guys, seems like every meeting you're on, the tiny goes into the tape.
Yeah. Well, I talked to her about it, and she, and she was canceled on the way. She said, she was on her way down there, and she, they said they told her over the phone that it was funny, that they had, they didn't want to go. And we do have an AED, and actually, we, we get batteries from EMS, they get better buys than we.
I, I wasn't gonna break it up this evening, but did you receive my email from others on the other day, relatively, very?
Yes, I did.
I didn't see a response, did you respond?
So the police cars carry one?
Yeah, we have, we have one with fuel in there.
Thank you.
Next town?
Mr. Brown.
I'm just wanting to update you on my complaint.
Okay.
I'm over the loop, really.
The Tash Check property was cited, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's going through the court system.
Okay, that, can you elaborate on that process, anybody?
You guys know it better than I do.
Tash Check, you know, came in and got it demolished, you know? And it's good for a year. They failed to do anything with the property. They were sent a letter telling them that the year was up, they have 15 days to commit to the township, and explained to the township what they were going to do. We got no response. I then cited them. The citation is up at the district magistrate's office as we speak. As of today, they have not responded to the citation. We're waiting for them to respond, to have a hearing in front of District Judge McGuire. Now, they were down there last week burning. Right. And Officer Zamponi went down and told them to put out the fire, explained to them that they cannot burn. It's from what I learned from Officer Zamponi, they have decided that in order to demolish the building, they're going to burn it bit by bit, and they were told, no, they cannot do that.
Follow-up question. When it goes to the...
The DJ.
Yeah, the DJ. What, what are, what are, what are his options as far as...
The district judge?
Yeah, like, I mean, does he find him, in order that the house needs to be demolished? What else?
He doesn't have the power to demolish the house. But what he does have the power to do is find her in violation of the ordinance. It's a monetary fine and/or jail, and she could be fined the maximum amount, if that rule is $300.
Per day?
Per day. So every day that that, that, that house is not demolished, she could be fined $300 a day. Now, I will, I will tell you, we had another problem with the gentleman who had a bunch of trash in his yard, and he refused to do anything with it. We went in front of the district judge. The district judge found him guilty, fined him $300, and told him that starting, he gave him five days to clean up the lawnmowers, and I think everybody will know who I'm talking about. And within five days, he cleaned up the lawnmowers, and the judge fined him the max $300, and told him in the fifth day, I was to go back and every day at 8 o'clock in the morning, issue him another citation until he cleaned up the property. So I know it seems at times that things are moving slowly.
I, 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 we, we have... But my, my, my thing is, you know, they can get fined a million dollars.
Well, they don't have money to pay. Eventually, what would happen is the township could have an inspector come in, deem it a hazardous property. The township could come in and pay to have it demolished and charge them for the demolishing cost plus 10%, which probably in reality would mean the township would end up owning that property, 'cause you can't get blood out of a tire.
Right.
My, my next question, how long, you know, how much, how much time are we talking here as far as issuing fines before township? That's not up to the township, that's up to the district magistrate. And I can only explain customary things because there's different monkey wrenches that they can throw into the works. They can ask for continuances to the cattle home, and as long as the DJ will give them a continuance, they can have it. They cannot respond to the citation, which it looks like is what's going to happen. What'll happen then is the district judge will issue a warrant for her arrest. And then the constable will get a warrant, the constable will arrest her on the warrant, she'll have to post bail, and then we'll have a hearing and we'll move on from there. So time period, we could be looking at something happening tomorrow. We can look at something happening 60 days from now. Next, the camper issue?
Okay, the zoning officer told them that, asked them to put in, I'm sorry, the zoning officer told them they were in violation. They submitted a application to, to the zoning officer to be allowed to have it there. He's denied that. He just denied that. He's telling them that they have, they have to do a land development plan or a waiver granted for, to the, to them for the trailer to be there, but he has to come in and start that process. What would, Rich, what would, if they don't come in and do that, how long do we give them?
Whatever the zoning officer wants to give them.
Okay.
If they don't comply, they can either be cited for violating the ordinance and/or civilly can file a complaint with the court enjoining them for maintaining that without a permit.
Okay. How long before, uh, how long are we looking at before they get cited?
Okay, the letter came out on October 28th, that they are in violation and they would have to do a land development plan. How long would Lenny give him? I don't know.
I'd suggest if he doesn't have it done within the next 15 days, Lenny sent him a letter saying he's got 10 days to do it, otherwise it'd be cited. That's only a suggestion.
Okay, heard Rich's suggestion on that.
Yep.
Put it before the board, I'm making a motion, we comply with his suggestion in regards to that, the letter in 15 days. You wanna hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion with a second, all those who favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. I wanna get the letter out ASAP. Okay, anybody else yet?
Oh, yes. Mr. Frisch?
Nothing.
Uh, Mrs. Frisch?
No.
Okay. Jean?
How are you open?
Uh, Randy, anything else? Mrs. Smith? Mr.? Jody?
Not at this time, other than I wanna thank Chief Pickles and Officer, what's her name?
Officer Langister.
Officer Langister for doing the child IDs for us on Saturday night at the... Harvey, Harvey, excuse me.
And then Lee? I could get your point taken.
He's right, he's not wearing a green shirt now, he's wearing a red one.
That's all, Henry.
Is that all?
That's all.
Okay. Be in, including visitors, invoice expenditures over for you. We have invoice expenditures for September 26th, October 30th. What is the wish of the board, or any comments in the, or approval?
This includes the fire payment out, and the $25,000 to the county fire company.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, the orders be drawn, the bills be paid.
I'll second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, treasures report, Helen?
You see there, you see I transferred twice from Oars Town over to Pliggett to cover our nice big bills. To cover our nice big bills.
Heavy month.
Heavy month. Other than that, there's nothing really outstanding.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve the treasures report.
I'll make that motion, subject to audit.
Okay, motion made. I hear a second.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Minutes, August 21st, 2013, August 28th, September 25th, September 25th, 2013, and October the 15th, for 2013. Any comments?
I have Brian's changes.
Comments, okay, in regards to?
And they're incorporated in here.
Okay. Have it before you, the approval of those minutes and those dates, or their rejection, those wishes board?
I move the minutes be approved.
Okay, motion been made, all those in favor give their consent.
Need a second.
I need a second. I'll second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye.
I abstain since I was not here for the 15th.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Cece.
Abstain from all, or just the 15th?
Just the, well, it was done collectively, can I?
You, you can, you can qualify your vote to say yea or nay, except for...
Okay, except for the 15th of October.
Okay, we have highway report before you.
That one's yours. That's yours.
Yes. Have a busy, busy month. Try to keep things moving out here. Like to start out, we finished road drainage in the code development down there on Morning Dove, opposite of, we had a pool out there to do some other things during the summer. We finally got back to correcting that drainage problem, and extreme erosion in the ditches in front of those people's houses, and we also fixed up the mailbox pull-off, and done some other patching on that road down there. We've watched it through the heavy rains, and it's working well as far as taking the water away at the present time. We survived a lot of excess rain during the month, let me tell you. Not as many drainage problems as we expected one out here. Gets full of leaves out on Creek Road, which a couple of times a day we had. But most of the places, we didn't have that problem, although we do have one there at the bottom of Fouts, is that that property, that pipe bear is on private property. See, we get the call when it ruins our roads, if we go out and open it up. Working with the municipal authority, when they put a line down over there, maybe we can do something with that and get with the property owners in the future to get that fixed up and get that, a better pipe in there, with a little bit of help and effort. So the township's not responsible to go in there and do that. It is really bad, too small, put in off-site, not on the township road. Need to be careful where we go, we'll talk to Slistre Wagner about that. Relocated the signs on King Mills Bridge is recommended by the county engineers. We had some signs out there that they didn't like where they were footage-wise, but relocated them, got them back out. We got a little bit of work he'd like to see down on the bridge out there, which we hope to get to it mainly on the guardrail. We installed new signs at the entrance to Mussy Balls up there, where the gentleman was sick in the road or smash up. We fixed the sign up, put it back up quickly, and then ordered new signs for it. So the new signs are in place, and incidentally, the sign, the labor, and the cost for that, for the township and employees, the new signs will be submitted to Police Department for restitution. We've got the agriculture sign, the T-signs up at the Cove Church on Cove Road down there, where we had a neighbor down there, that farms a farm over there, almost got hit by people coming around. Put the slow signs there, hope it works out, hope things get a little bit better there. But we did get those out. We got the curb signs on Schoolhouse Road, reduced speed sign there, right beside the, before you get to the shore plant there, and hope that bend maybe slows people down. Everybody wanted to see signs there, we finally got them up. We've done a lot of grading on the dirt section of Linton Hill Road and repair, took some modified out there, rolled it in, tried to get that a little better shape for winter. And I would sure like to see that road get paved, to get the township out of the dirt, because those dirt roads are nothing but continual maintenance. We had a nice day out here, we spent a day on the roof repair on the garage. Part of that roof out there is aluminum roofing out there, it's a lot of expansion, it was put along with the nails. A lot of the nails have become loose, were starting to show up with a leak or two, we spent a day working on them. And the, got maybe another half a day out there, would like to get up to get the rest of it. We had our fall cleanup, light this year on the fall cleanup. Really light for the amount of people that come in with the fall cleanup. We're working on Gambler's Road out here in the ditch, it's been bad, right straight across from Morrissey's, down over the hill on the left, and opened up that culvert down there. And working out there today and tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get that portion of it done. I would like to mention that the request for the signs at 274 down here at the Legion, our police officers met with PennDOT on that, and they can tell you exactly what PennDOT's going to put up, they're going to put speed bumps down there to get everybody's attention, et cetera, to try to get them slowed down. Okay, so PennDOT was responsible when we got the letter in to them, and the signs and the work is being worked on for the retarders down through Purdix. We're taking a look at, at that, see what we can't do with that, see if we can't get the state to put them up. But from what I understand, it was a productive meeting with PennDOT as far as down here at Legion, we'd like to see. Matter of fact, I think they gave a little more than what we asked for.
They gave a lot more than we asked for, yes.
Okay. I would like to comment on the controversial tree down in Purdix down there. We've got a hold of Century Link and those down there with that tree down there, where they're worried about falling down, tearing the lines down. They come back as much as tell you that they've got the correspondence, they're not going to do nothing to it till it takes the lines down. And I, I can't believe that, but we can't get up there, and, and they, it's on private property, so I see that there's another one there up Schoolhouse with the same thing that we're going to be faced with. So we did get a response back from Century Link in regards to that. I have the highway report out here, you can take a look at, I had reported earlier about the hemlock poison out there, and we had, Liquid Fuels Man was in here the other day and was remarking about the, what's regards about that. I never said anything to them, but we have a worse one that is the state of PA called giant hogweed, which I've read several articles on. We have that here. Giant hogweed, if it gets in your eyes, you're blind. It is very, very bad, it is something that they're trying to, they want reports of it because they, the state don't even want anybody to go around. It is long-lasting scars, it comes in contact with the eyes, blindness. And so, I have that here, we'll put that information out here. It's not prevalent in this area, but we do have it in the state of PA, and they're worried about the, this spread of it. There's pictures of it and the literature on it, so I'd like to pass that on. Broke group, keep your eyes open for such a thing. I have one other thing I'd like to remark on. This winter will probably be the last for the old 554 that we have out here. I'd like to get through the winter with it, the new one we have, we've had yet to get in the salt. But we'd like to get through the winter with it, get as much out of it. The maintenance on the trucks in the past were not washed very well, not taken care of, and now as soon as we're done, trucks immediately, the next day after plow and snow, are washed. But the new, worse for out here, chemicals in it to neutralize the salt. But we're going to get one more inspection out of it, and I'd like to bring it to attention now, come spring, I'd like to advertise it for sale. One other thing we have sitting out here that's a maintenance item and a cost to us, and that's the argo. It's set out there, it hasn't been used, it's the last time it was got out and run, constantly got charged a battery, the batteries are $150 for in it. You got a 20-gallon gas tank, the gas goes stale in it, that you constantly got to do something with it. I would like to put it before the board, that we re-advertise the argo and get it out of the system out there, because I have yet to find whether there's been much use for it, or where we can use it. It is not good in any swift water or anything, although it is, it will float, but if you get in any current or anything, you're going downstream. So I'd like to make a motion that we re-advertise that for sale. We can use the room out there, and that money be put in capital reserve, whatever we get for the thing.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion been made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, I appreciate that. I have nothing else on, on the road crew. We did, got our snow plows and stuff, made sure we got all new pins and everything out here for them. Hope that we can keep the equipment going, because I withstand it, agree. If you take a look at the amount of walnuts on the ground this year, that's a good sign of bad winter, isn't it, Stan? I never saw the like of them, since I've seen them this year. I don't know whether it's worth it, I think that might be better than the woolly bear.
Of course.
Okay?
Argo, no minimum bid?
No, I'd just like to advertise it, Helen, see what we got, you know, no minimum bid, we have the right to accept or reject any or all bids.
I know what to put in it.
That is, it is the maintenance, we already put one battery in it, and they're, they're expensive, and it just, it just sits there. Okay, and that's all I have for the highway report, Penn Township Planning Commission before you.
First thing you have is the warden property, they are requesting a time extension acceptance until January 29th, 2014.
I would like to make a comment on that, a few comments. After reading their explanation of why they would like, why they feel they should get a time extension, when I compare what they're saying with the minutes, albeit draft minutes, from the October municipal authority meeting, there are some differences that I don't feel comfortable giving them the extension they're looking for. We'd be willing to give them a 30-day extension, but not until January 29th. I think this is another one of those things that actually should go back to the planning commission as a brand-new plan. This is so different from what it started out being. But that's not my determination, my motion is that we grant them a 30-day extension.
Having read over that and found out that they have listed in there, we had a meeting, we didn't have a meeting, I can concur with that. I'll second that motion, that we only grant the time extension for a 30-day period till they get a chance to resolve up. Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay?
Century Link is requesting a waiver of the land development plan. They wish to put, what is they calling this thing? An H-frame to mount telephone equipment down on the game land area, at pull-off, on the bottom of Cove Road and State Road. Planning Commission recommended granting with the condition that a zoning permit be obtained if necessary based on the zoning officer's interpretation.
I have no problem concurring with that, Helen. I would like to ask Rich whether to be, an addition put onto that, this motion with the supervisors. The only thing we don't have is, is anything from game commissioners saying that they gave them permission to put this here.
Then you can give the approval based upon two conditions. That is the zoning officer's interpretation and permission of the game commission.
Okay. We, we need something here that says that they've actually got permission to where they want to put this. Okay? Okay, make that in form of a motion, that we grant a waiver, subject to those conditions that we just brought forward, expressed by Slistre Wagner.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Do I give them a 911 address, or wait until we get the conditions approved for the waiver?
I would, I would, I don't know what, but it would hurt, I mean, they need a 911 address. You don't see any harm given that, for that area, I don't know why not. Okay. Zoning report.
You have the zoning officer's report before you.
Okay. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll move?
Yeah, there's nothing major on that. You also have a request from Karen Tilkins, they're going to go to the zoning hearing board to request putting a shed in front of their lot. Planning Commission recommended approval of this variance, as there appears to be hardship with the topography of the lot.
Helen, I make a motion that the township, since it's so minor that we do not partake in it, we're not part of it.
Okay. The next one is for, I'm sorry.
I'll need a second, I'll second the motion. Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Sorry. The next one is for Giovanni Ortenzi, he's requesting the same thing. This is located on 1115, where that one shed was put in. Planning Commission voted to express the following concerns, they didn't say yes or no. They want to know what the right-of-way of 1115 is in front of his house. Is there a site distance issue with the shed where it's standing right now? And can the shed be moved closer to the house to be more compliant with the zoning ordinance?
I guess those questions that they've put forward should be addressed by the plant, by the supervisors at the meeting, Helen. So I'll make a motion that we acquire all that information on the right-of-way, the site distance, and et cetera, and present it that night to, to the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
Okay?
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Who's going to present?
What's that?
Who's going to present it?
You're always there. If you can't make it, I will.
Oh, no, I'll be, I'll have to be there anyway. That's all for the zoning officer.
Storage enforcement officer report.
Okay, you have his report in front of you. He's done some perks and probes in different areas. Nothing really outstanding. Also, you have a renewal of a holding tank permit for Mr. For's Dodge dealership. And along with that, you also have a letter from Mr. For requesting that the supervisors reduce or eliminate the letter of credit required for this. I have that out here. Got to find him. I believe it's 3,200. Am I having it over in the other office? I have it in the other office.
I think that's what it was, Helen, we looked at it. The holding tank permit down there, I make a motion that we renew that holding tank permit for him down there, subject to all the permits, I mean, subject to the contract that's required for him to resent the township, okay? And also, as we've done in the past, after a year with the holding tanks, I make a motion that we waive that security deposit put up to the holding tank.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
That's all for this zoning.
Okay, I have one other thing underneath the storage enforcement officer report I would like to bring up at the last meeting. It was an issue down here with Voodoo Johns down here, in regards to it. Statement was made, and I took it as an open complaint about Bill Warner back at the winery, having a Porta John back there, okay? I went down, I talked to Mr. Warner about it, sure enough, it was one sitting there. Okay, he was under the impression that when he was granted that down there, that he was allowed to use the inside facilities for employers inside within his own house, et cetera, and he put that one out there for, for the town, for the public when they come in. And I said, Bill, you need to come up and take a look at what you got, you can't have that. So he came up. So he came up, we showed him what, what, what the regs were, what he had to do out there. He immediately called Lenny Sizer, got Lenny to come down, and he's applied for the permits through DEP, and et cetera, and he is putting the holding tank in gladly, because he said that's something he'd just been putting off, now he has wash, wash and flush toilets here for, for the visitors that come there. Before, they had a porta potty there, and so people used it, but no place to wash their hands, and that. So, he was, he was, he was more thankful that we brought it up to him than he was, than he said, "Just something I thought about, but I never got it." So he is in the process, and Lenny went down to look at it, where he must have put it, and those permits will be issued, and Mr. Warner will be putting a holding tank in there that meets the requirements for what he has there. So, it was good to see someone not upset, but was brought to his attention. Usually, usually it don't go too well, but he was very congeal about it. That's all I have, I wanted to remark on that, and Penn Township Park and Rec Board reports before you.
Of course, before you, then.
Yes, Lee.
Actually, for Helen.
Yes.
Did they get back to you?
Yes, I have it over there.
Yours is over there.
He even signed it today.
I signed it for you today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll take care of it. Okay, Penn Township Park and Rec Board Board report?
Just two quick things, we did purchase a new stove for the kitchen, and we had a successful Halloween party, and I just wanted to thank everybody that donated their time and items, and almost 50 pumpkins we got, and that's it.
Big pumpkins.
We're doing curb delivery next year.
Okay.
Don't get them so big.
Thank you. Penn Township Municipal Authority?
There's two things in the packet. One is, we received a letter requesting the township consider adopting the attached mandatory water connection as an ordinance. You have that before you. And the other is a letter of support for the CDBG competitive grant for the water improvement project.
Okay, Helen, we'll take a look at the mandatory water connection ordinance, and they made a request for it, and I make a motion that we draft a letter of support for them for on their CDBG grant, and need a second on that.
I'll second, well, I'd better not.
No, you, okay. Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
And I am abstaining.
Okay, CC give her reason for abstaining. Secretaries report.
Okay.
Faculty road performance bond.
Yes, it's been a year since this project was completed, and I just need to know if you wish to release the bond.
Okay, haven't seen any changes or anything out there. Max, do you feel any need to take a look at it? Okay? Okay, okay. I'll make a motion that we release it, Helen.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Verizon is also asking for the release of their performance bond, this is for the cell tower over on Roar, Roar Bus property.
Okay, Helen, I'll also make a motion that we release that, time frame has been up, I haven't heard any problems. So you're a second.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
I have drafted a amendment to the holding tank to deal with port-a-jongs. Look at it.
I'd ask the supervisors to take a look at that.
There's also a form, there'll be exhibit B for signature on that, and please look at it, Rich.
Okay, write to note request, Helen?
Yes.
If there's some changes?
The Office of Open Records changed their request form, they're adding a note to retain a copy of the actual request, and also are providing an area for the open records officer to check off that you notified appropriate third parties of an opportunity to object to the request. I'm asking if we can amend our form to comply with this one.
I'll make a motion that we make our form like theirs, give it your accord.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. Traffic light maintenance.
I gave you the quote that I'm sending out, requesting that, I'll have the stuff in, the quotes back by the budget meeting for you. Is there anything you want changed on this, let me know.
Okay.
Okay. Treasurers' position.
Treasurers' position, as I announced there, on 10:23, we had a personnel meeting with the lady, she came in here and sat down and talked to us about taking the position, and from the time that the interview was done, until that time, she won an extreme amount more money. I mean, an astronomical amount, okay? And of course, at this time, I'd like to make a motion before the board, that in view of what was discussed with her at the meeting, that we notify her that we're not going to award that position to her. And I would call for a second on that, that Helen be given the okay to send her a letter out, tell her that we decided not. Okay, motion made, call him for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. I'd also like to put before the board, we re-advertise the treasurer's position, okay, ASAP, and so we can get that advertised, and get applicants in here, and cut off date on applicants, Helen. We took a look at that today in the calendar, and like to try to get that worked in, that we can get that and the interview done before next month.
Okay, do you want the applications in to review at the budget meeting?
That would be fine.
I need to know that date.
Okay, and that, that's the only thing coming up for our budget meeting, is set the date.
Okay.
And we looked at that earlier there today, on, on the budget date, I'd like to see that, I'd like to try for the week of the 11th to the 16th there?
Not Monday.
No, no, okay? Any of those other days?
Preferably not Thursday.
Okay?
We're down to three.
Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday?
Tuesday?
Okay?
Okay.
Time, budget?
6:30, 7?
6:30.
6:30? Okay, and it's at the budget meeting, Helen.
Okay, yeah, I'll advertise that. And then I'll make sure all the applications are in the Friday before.
And by that date, so we hand it out, we get to look at them, and schedule interviews before the month.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. My next thing is Dunken Fire Company, it's requesting to either reduce or eliminate their letter of credit for out on 274. Have Max's letter from '09, from when we reduced it. There was seeding and mulching still needed at that point, something with a discharge in the southern swell, and then the emergency spillway, needs, needed to be corrected.
That emergency swell out there, as I recall, they had their engineer who had done the work for him, I could come back and verify that the elevations were supposed to be right, and we questioned how deep that was. I don't know of anything else that they haven't complied with out there, in, in regards to that. If you wanna re-verify that one thing on the swell out there, we can bring that forward to do that.
You can do that, you want to get together to do that?
Yep, I would like to do that, and, so that we can take a look at reducing that. I know what it's based on, the plans out there, so I'm, so I'll take a look at that, Max, okay?
Can you table for now?
Yes, I'd like to table that for now, Helen, to make sure that that's done. Okay?
I move to table the question, until you can read it, so.
I'll second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Okay, and then, these are FYI, I gave you the capital tax collect, the cap, cap tax meeting information with their budget, and, with their audit and their budget there, and also the Perry County Tax Collection Committee information. That's all I have.
Okay. Engineers report?
I have a copy of my report, it's really not, really, working on the, with the planning commission on, on some of the zoning revisions in the conference, and update information, but what's not on the report is something that I, I got yesterday, I was at a, a meeting where the head of the MS four group at the central office for PEP was present and put on a presentation, and he advised us at this point in time, they currently have about 30 to 40, 35 to 40 percent of the permits have actually, actually been issued across the state. They are behind and severely understaffed, they're working on them as fast as they can. The interesting part to me, from Penn Township's perspective, is, is although they said there would be virtually no exemptions or waivers granted, there was a number of them that have been granted so far. So, they are looking at those, those requests closely, so there's still some hope that you might get the waiver.
Is that all you have, Max? I'd like to make a request, we've had a request from Terry Weaver back here, in regards to a problem, some run-off from neighbor's driveway, comes across terrace, deposits a little bit of dirt and et cetera. I was out and took a look at it, difficult job to get away from, and don't know where you're going through, extremely expensive, and, and, and there is a solution. But because of the solution and expense involved, to get rid of that little bit of water, I would like to ask Max to come up some evening, or sometime he's through this area, to give me a call, go out there and take a look at it ourselves, and meet with her, because she would like to have some kind of an answer. It is, is, is possible to do what she wants, but it's gonna be expensive for the township to take care of that water. So, I'd like to ask Max to do that, and give permission for the board to be in to meet with him.
I'll soon move.
Okay? Oh, you're a second.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, okay? Police report for you.
We have our police report for you. We did meet with Penn Dots on the 274 and Main Street intersection. It's not speed bumps, but rumble strips, they suggested, put in there, and update the signage, too, and add some more signs that, opposing traffic doesn't have to stop, a lot of times people are confused if they're not from around here, that, that the people coming towards them don't, don't have to stop, so that's what that suggests, is where the, the signs, I think, were placed there in 2000, and, and there are some newer, and actually larger signs that they suggested also to place that. And, about it, everything else is, looking at, we sent in our proposed budget for next year, and.
Was there any discussion coming west, out of the borough? There's a, a very abbreviated median that keeps the two westbound lanes separate from the two eastbound lanes. Twice in the last two weeks, I've seen traffic coming out of the borough on the south side of that median, so they're in the northbound 1115 turn lane, they're on the wrong side of the road, I guess. I didn't know, something simple, I know they have those flexible reflectors, like put in that, that median or something, just to really delineate that, that you're not allowed to go.
Yeah, they photographed the whole intersection, and actually wanna do a whole redesign, too.
I, I didn't think any of it, so you just mentioned it, but we looked at it twice within the last two weeks.
And actually, while we were there, there was a bus turn, and then you actually went over that median, and sort of.
Yeah, this was traffic coming out of the borough, you know, west into Penn Township, that was on the wrong side of that little, it's not even a curb, really, it's just elevated small.
Yeah, 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 they're gonna redesign that whole thing, yeah.
I have a question, too, when you come down to 74, and you get to the lane there, the south side, you can go straight into town, or you can go right out of town? Is that two lanes there?
No, that's one lane there, and that's one of the suggestions. Talking about putting some type of a, a, a turning lane in there.
I don't know how many times I've almost hit someone, because I come down the street, and they're beside me, and I don't, I'm not paying attention, because I'm thinking they're not supposed to be there.
And they're not supposed to be there.
Okay.
No, they're not. They were thinking, too, about putting hash marks in there, but we were also thinking possibly putting some type of turn in there, if, if it permits, if there's enough room there.
I like the idea of the budget being, just bring the red leg down here.
It doesn't need to be.
Put it on wheels and move it down when it.
Standing's up, it works fine the way it is now.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yeah.
It's very nice that, um.
Okay. Permit report?
Nothing unusual before you, a couple new houses coming in.
Slaughter report?
I'd like to point out two things. One, it was with somewhat reluctance that I, for years, had my report right after the engineer. Then I was denigrated to coming after the police. Now I've been moved to, under the permit report, and I've just reasoned that if I go three more spaces, my report will come after adjournment.
That was a mistake.
I don't know. I don't know. I have nothing under report, but I'd like to say something personally, and I don't know about the, the mixing of, of government with other aspects of life, but I'm gonna say it anyway. A dear friend of mine, former police chief of Lower Allen Township, Charlie Snyder, was diagnosed with stomach cancer, and I realize we do not meet Sunday mornings here, but if various people in their various meetings on Sunday mornings would keep Charlie in their thoughts, I would deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, I have one question for you, I feel an awful lot of questions of where we stand down here, why things aren't moving on the mic board process down here.
It's, the suit's been filed, I have to, Helen asked me that today, and I didn't get back to the office to check, I have to see if he's filed a response to it.
Okay.
And I'll do that, and report back, it won't be tomorrow, I'm in trial all day tomorrow, but I'll try to get to it Friday.
Okay.
And then, and under yours, we have the Morrison letter of credit.
But we already did that, didn't we?
No.
Oh, we did?
We did other letter credits.
I thought we decided that it was resolved.
It, yeah, we talked about it, Helen, on that, but it needs to be a motion made now, I don't think, you had it on the agenda, we talked about it earlier here, in, in regards to that. You weren't here, in your absence.
All right. I was like, I don't remember this.
That was one of those things you were supposed to get to Rich before the meeting. Okay, nevertheless, the Morrison's letter of credit, he has met everything that he was required to do up there in regards to, he's got approval on his system and et cetera, and so there's no way that I see that we can withhold that any longer, his microfinance. So I make a motion that we relinquish that required letter of credit for that amount.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with.
Question.
Yes.
What was he required to do with that? Because he's not.
He was required to get approval from DEP, revert this onto his system, see if he can get moving with it.
Okay, he got approval, and that's as far as it has gone. I don't believe that's anything.
My brother's taking a look at that. I think from what he done, he probably, not those requirements, maybe, maybe, my views are wrong.
Well, it's, why don't you table it, till we have a chance to look through it?
Okay? Okay? Make a motion, we table it.
I'll second that.
Second motion, okay, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
I think this needs to be taken to the municipal authority to see what action has been taken, because there's been a lot of correspondence back and forth.
Okay.
You indicated that that had been discussed earlier, I still recall hearing that discussed, let me get that taken.
That was between Henry and I, before the meeting started.
I asked for his opinion on it, you know, that he met, met all the requirements on it, some of the things that we tried to take care of during the week.
This is the whole agreement, this is, these are all the same page.
I was curious, because there was a motion, and I thought maybe, there was, it was withdrawn.
Yeah.
It was drawn. The motion was withdrawn?
Yeah.
Yes, Brian just made a motion to accept it, and then he withdrew it, I was curious when.
No, I seconded the motion, and I withdrew my second.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Okay, clear on that?
Okay.
Okay, worse one, Helen.
Okay, you have a Hatz letter from Harrisburg area. Okay. You have a hats letter from Harrisburg area transportation studies with their meeting dates for the technical and coordinating committee. Sun Home Health and Hospice, Hospice is asking for a donation. Mr. Chapis, Chapis, is asking for signage on perks. I believe you touched on that with the police for no engine retard signs being placed up.
We addressed that several years ago. What, what discussion was had on that?
I thought we, didn't you mention that you met with them on that?
Penn Dot and they, they're gonna, they're gonna do a study. Study has to be done.
I had asked about one a number of years ago before I was even a supervisor.
Yes.
And I was told that they could not be enforced. And that's why we didn't have them.
Well, they can be enforced now. It depends how long ago they, they, they told you that.
We got approval and everything.
No, by all means, they can be enforced. And Marysville has one that's up to the mountain.
They do.
And then, and then we were hoping to get one like around, around the mountain towards and then down to just the area where the fifty-three footers are restricted to actually down to like the dollar, dollar yard. That would be all, it's all residential.
Good. I hope we get one.
Yeah, they have to study. Maybe somebody can get on that.
No, it's, yes, we are. I'm sorry.
Hey, Helen, next. Okay.
Perry County Planning Commission, they sent a letter regarding the municipal comprehensive plans with the update to the Perry County comprehensive plans. Basically saying they did it. Oh, and they're asking us to adopt this resolution to, okay, my mind just went blank.
I was off in the room field the other day and talking to Jason about that.
Okay.
It's for information only at the present time.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good. The next one is from Perry County Planning Commission regarding municipal planning support services. We have not gone with this in the past. Except for one time and then we didn't use them.
That's correct. Cost us a bunch of money. We got nothing from it. Okay.
Tri-County is asking us to nominate a, a member to represent us at the Perry Southeastern Plan Development Section. We have, who do we have here? Mr. Bob Rhodes of Wheatfield Township has, has been our representative in the past.
I make a motion, Helen, we'll go by proxy again, one for the same person.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. Although there's a favor, give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so would.
The next is from Perry County Tax Assessment. They wish to know if we are interested in attending the tax assessment hearings, appeal hearings. They've already set three, four up for us, for our township, for today. Isn't that nice? But, and for the futures. If we, we haven't attended them in the past.
Okay. And wish of the board, tab?
You say we've not attended in the past? Would there be any benefit to, to attending?
Only if we wanted to fight the appeal or we think they're appealing for too much of a discount or reduction. Just for the real estate.
What's the wish of the board? It's basically an information thing you're going to be sitting through a meeting. It's nothing we're going to be making decisions in regard.
We want to make decisions, but we would be expected to say yea, to either support or deny or not deny, but be against it. And if we're against it, we have to permit, present evidence why. Just like when we all went through our own.
I make a motion we don't attend those if we haven't done it in the past and I don't really see a huge benefit to it.
There hasn't been that many really. A lot of them happen when there's reassessment, but other than that, you don't get too many.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. Although there's a favor, give their consent by saying aye.
There's a hazard mitigation plan in there that they updated on. I don't know where mine is, but that's just information. And then the Cumberland Perry County Task Force meeting is tomorrow at eight-thirty here and then the agenda's on the back. And that's all the correspondence.
Okay. All business?
Comprehensive plan. Has been advertised for adoption. What's your wish? You don't have anything on the comprehensive plan in there.
Okay, before the board for approval rejection of comprehensive plan adoption. I've been working on that for a long time. The update has been done. We've met the requirements of our municipal planning code by doing that and we're a little bit behind in getting it done. Calling for a motion to adopt our comprehensive plan.
I will make that motion.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. Discussion. I would like to offer this discussion on this comprehensive plan. Today, I received a phone call from an individual who was really concerned about this comp plan. And some of these other questions have come up at the hearing and et cetera. This person here in particular employs a tremendous amount of people in the township. Businessman, well-known and known him for all my life. For many, many years, you can't say all my life. His concern was that he had employee that came to him and said, what's happening here, Henry, tonight? We're changing all the zoning in the township. I said, well, nothing like that has taken place. No zoning being changed in the township tonight. Well, I was told on my farm out here that I own and have considerable amount of ground, that I won't be able to build anything on it. Everything's being changed, agriculture and et cetera. Now, there's a lot of controversy on this comprehensive plan, what is going, what is holding back. Nobody in this room or anybody else in Penn Township can show me one piece of ground besides those that have been put in land reserve of the county that can't be built upon. None. If you take a look at the comprehensive plan, comments that come back from the county, it tells us when in reality, we don't have an agriculture program. We have an urban development plan called agriculture. So, my farm, this gentleman's farm, any other farm, any land in Penn Township, whether it's forest reserve or et cetera, can be built upon, can be developed. There is not one piece out here that has been put in where a lot of places are agriculture that you are tied down that it is agriculture. The only way you can keep it agriculture is a process that some of the people have done and I'm working through it myself to preserve the land by donating the development rights to the county. That protects my place. That's my decision, my choice. I explained to the gentleman, if he wanted to build on his land, that he could build houses, he could do with it whatever he want, although he said he had no plans. He was concerned about what he was told and why would we be doing this? I said, there's no truth to it. There is nothing there that has that in place or that's going to do that. And he said, well, he said, I, I'll take your word for it, Henry. He said, I believe what you're telling me to be the truth. And that is the truth. There is nothing out here. The footprint that was laid out is something that they take a look at for the future that maybe the zoning could be or would be changed if the need requires it, if I'm not correct, Max. You work through this whole thing. And so, there was a lot made about it. And when you get people like that that are so concerned, and I heard one other person here at the hearing one night that made the statement that they wanted, they were so concerned about they wouldn't be able to sell pieces of foreign rent to their children or this and that, it was tied up, that it wasn't done. That is absolutely incorrect. And I would like that and make that statement for the record so that it is in the minutes and that it's in there. This comprehensive plan does not take any of that away from anybody. We are weak, if anything, on agriculture land, how it's set up, contrary to what the county and a lot of other counties have and a lot of other places would like to see. So, I sat there and I talked to Jason Fiddy, I take a look at the, at the county planning up here and what they want and et cetera. And so, I explained to him, now if you have your farm in clean and green, then you impose penalties on it far greater than anything the township has, cause if you can still develop it, but you gotta pay them back taxes for seven years. So, there's nobody out here that been hurt by this comprehensive plan and we've done it as cheap instead of doing a whole complete plan for thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars. We've come in around fifteen and I'm tired. I don't want to see any more money spent. So, I appreciate the vote on it. We've met the requirements of the municipal, municipality planning code and we've updated them. And we're behind in the timeframe that we should do that. Somewhere along the line, the next ten years, someone's going to get through this again. Requirements there, it's one of those things you have to follow through. So, I was kind of alarmed that, that, but I appreciated the gentleman giving me a call and I, I explained to him that that's what it is. So, for the record, I also explained it here tonight. If I stand corrected on what I've said, I stand corrected, but I don't believe that I'm incorrect in what I've said. So, those that believe that are in error and those that say it are in error, passing it around and we're losing a lot. That was the discussion I had on that. The motion's been made, followed through with a second. This time I call for the vote. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye's have it. Thank you. Under new budget, new business, you had the budget, the date's been set. Yes?
Just a follow-up on the meeting last month. I know years past, the money appropriated or budgeted for the county MS has been released in November and just wanted to verify that that was still the intended supervisor.
Okay. At the present time, yes, great. Okay.
Thank you.
New business, the budget's been set. I have nothing else underneath new business?
Got a couple of questions.
I was wondering, I had made some phone calls about internet. We have restrictions on us on what we can and can't have?
No.
In the code?
No.
Yes.
You don't have.
They told me that I'd have to come to our town hall to get approval. I called FiOS. They will not come in because we have a, I can't remember the verbiage they used, but we have a contract with a specific carrier, so they're forbid to come in unless we ask them in, was basically what they were saying.
Well, I don't know of any of them that's ever asked to come in or anybody that's ever come to us for it.
How do you follow through with that? Cause they're denying me service. I've called Verizon, I've called FiOS, I've called Comcast and they're denying us. I want to have more options. I do not want Blue Ridge. Not for any specific reason other than my internet is crap at my house. I get rid of Embark because they did not run higher speed out through there.
Yeah.
So, it traps me with what I can have. And I have a lot of things in my house. I have two kids. I have two of everything. Two Xbox Live, two iPads, two computers, all iPhones. My house is constantly down. I need higher, higher internet and I do not want Blue Ridge. I do not like their service. It does not run efficiently. That's just my opinion, but I want to have other options. So, how do we get permission to get these people in here?
They mentioned franchise agreement probably is what you're.
Well, they said come to the town hall and address it, so I.
And, and we're currently working on the franchise agreement. That's, that's correct. With, with Blue Ridge and, and to, to actually upgrade the system too, to, to, to make them give everybody what they, what they want too.
Well, they did try with a hefty price tag attached and I'm not willing to do that. I mean, it was a lot cheaper with Embark, CenturyLink, Sprint, whatever you want to call it, but unfortunately they don't have the upgrades run back through the code. Is that something we can have? I, I don't want it to be restricted.
They can have it. It's, it's no different.
One internet provider.
I know what you're saying. It's just like, you know, I'd, I'd like to have it over to my house.
Yeah.
And with Blue Ridge, if I want it at my house, I gotta pay to have it run across the field, about eight grand. Don't give it to me. Eight grand to run the line out.
No.
What you're looking at is something that they need a supply that's not there.
Well, they said they can come off our existing lines that come back. It's some of, the FiOS and some of it's digital, some of it's satellite.
Yeah.
But they gotta have permission to come in because they would do a sample run from an existing person living there to see if they could get it in and use the existing that's there. But they, again, they say they have to have permission because Blue Ridge is the provider of our area. They can find us on the map and locate a hundred miles from us where the service is, but they say they're restricted from coming in.
Well, that, that's gotta be something that we have no control of.
No, we can tell when they wrote it in the contract.
It's wrote in the contract that Blue Ridge is our only provider.
Any can pay our franchise fees and, and come in if they will.
Yeah, but who's going to do the franchise fee thing? That's not something I can approve.
No, no, no. That's, that's something that townships actually is, is in the process of updating their, the franchise agreements now.
But are you just saying you're going to do your franchise agreement with strictly Blue Ridge?
No, no, no. It's, it's a, it's a township franchise agreement. And then Blue Ridge would have to abide by that, which would give you, you know, a better service. All, anybody that would come in and want to, to put cable in would, would have to go through the, would get a franchise agreement.
What about FiOS?
FiOS could come in.
FiOS could come in too.
Comcast could come in, Blue Ridge could come in, Mom and Pop Cable Company could come in.
Dish Network is now offering it and I have Dish Network at my home.
Anyone that wants to come in can come in, but they have to pay the, the franchise fees.
Okay. And is that something that's negotiated? Who do they speak to to get? Like if I call them and say, I want you to come in, and they say, well, I'm sorry, we're restricted to come in, who do I turn them to?
You know, I, I can't understand they'd be, how they can.
They specifically pulled it up on the map and said they knew we were under a lock restriction of just Blue Ridge.
And it might be something with, with their own, with their company that they, and, and a lot of times, you know, Comcast and other, other people would.
So, I can't have Comcast.
Never heard of that.
No, I mean, they would, maybe it's something between themselves to respect each other.
Can I do that? Give them the township office number? Okay. I'm going to do that. I mean,
Give them your number.
What number? What number can I give them?
Well, they, they give me a call.
Eight-three-four-six-four-one-four.
Okay.
I don't know whether it's going to take place, but they run the new fiber optics, you know, back to the cell tower.
Yeah. Now, what, is that, is that going to be in Bar?
Uh, that's CenturyLink. That's run that back to the AT&T tower.
Is that the same thing? Is that bought them out?
They were in the process. You said now, once they do that, that they can provide high-speed further back through.
Now, we do have high-speed. I did have it. We have DSL. Are you talking something different?
Are you, you say you're with Blue Ridge?
No, no. I had Embark before that, but Embark couldn't offer me, I think they offered five-twelve. I wanted something a little more consistent.
Yeah. And I don't know what CenturyLink provides.
That is, that's what you're saying? That they did tell me they are trying to upgrade back through there?
They're upgrading that. That's part of what you saw here tonight from panel down on the game commission. And they, they've run the line now back from there to the tower so that they can, for whatever reason, they're required by the FCC to do it.
Right. What's that?
And they were trying to upgrade it back through there so that they could provide, you, you could get internet through your phone right now, but it's real slow. You don't, don't come that far. Only goes as far as the church.
I actually have two lines. They run two, Embark came out when it was, Embark before it was CenturyLink, cause I think when I got rid of it, it was CenturyLink. They actually run two lines. I have two separate lines. I have a DSL line from the box across the street through my yard and I have a phone line. So, I'm dedicated. Correct, correct. So, I'm not, I was not opposed to having them. They were actually a better service than Blue Ridge. They just didn't have the capabilities to do faster service for more. They just didn't have the capabilities to do faster service for more products, like internet TV, iPad, iPhone, all that stuff that you need, that you want to run Wi-Fi in your home. Are you saying that that is now gonna be an option back to CenturyLink now?
Well, they're, I mean, yeah, they're running fiber now, so they would be faster now too, but any company that wants to run cable in the area...
But I think, I think the drawback to FiOS and Comcast is they don't have any cable run back through there.
Yeah, they don't have any cable.
So for them to run cable back through the code, they're gonna have to pick up whatever their closest contact point, which, and I don't know. It might be Marysville.
Right.
So they're gonna have to run all the way up through Perdix and all the way out to the code to hook you up.
Right.
And they're never gonna make their money back just hooking you up.
No, not just one.
I wanted to get Comcast at my house.
Blue Ridge is still a baby. They pulled stuff off Comcast up. Twenty-seven supposedly, because right out of the studio.
And they did say that, that they could run off my line. Is that a true statement? That if there is an existing cable line there, they can hang on?
I don't know what kind of agreement they have with Blue Ridge or Embark.
Okay. Maybe you can help them and answer their questions when they call.
We could speak with them.
I'm not saying, I don't mind Blue Ridge. I'm not saying, I don't use them. I have them now for my internet. I just don't appreciate the calls that I get.
In this day and age, there isn't any reason why we don't have freedom of choice for every provider that there is out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And that's this, this attorney group, the Cohen group that we just, the township just hired in Pittsburgh, that's what they're working at getting us.
Okay, good. Wonderful. That's great.
Yes, Jody?
Just a couple, three, four quick questions, because we bounced through there so fast. On the website, June and July's minutes, when are they gonna be available?
Friday. Friday, I'm dedicating time to the webpage.
Okay. What was the amount for the foreign fire insurance check that you were drafting?
Okay, give me a second here. Twenty thousand...
While she's looking that up. On the argo, last year it was proposed forbid via the police department and the money put back into the police vehicle fund. Now you're advertising it through the township and the money going back into capital reserve with no limits.
And the police vehicle fund has worked through our capital reserve, and there's a near mark for it in our capital reserve for that. That's how, that's where it goes, Jody.
Okay. And you're putting no minimum?
What's that?
You're putting no minimum on that?
Well, if, that's what we did the last time, and so we didn't get what we wanted for it, so the thing said another year become less value.
Right, so wouldn't it make sense to put a minimum, and then they're not gonna bid if they're...
What's that?
Wouldn't it make sense to put a minimum, and then you're not gonna go through an exercise in futility to get bids for three dollars versus you're not gonna accept anything less than four thousand or...
We didn't get any bids for three dollars.
Wow.
We got a number of bids. They were all pretty close to each other. We had one bid that was a couple thousand more. If we put a minimum amount, you're gonna find that all our bids are gonna come in around the minimum amount.
Okay.
And we're trying to get as much as we can for the argo.
Except the minimum of twenty thousand.
And we won't get any bids.
I mean, I know you got, I know how much you got for it. I know what it was worth when you purchased it, and it had extra perks on it when it was received.
Yeah.
Because it was a state grant with the assistance of senators and representatives, is there any disposal requirements with that?
Oh, we checked that. We don't have none.
We've had it long enough.
Yeah, it's been owned long enough. There's usually a five or ten year.
Okay, well, it's been six, so...
Yeah, no requirements there. We checked with Corbin's office where the money came from.
Okay, and I'm assuming she's still getting it?
No, I'm waiting. Twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay. And the controversial trees you mentioned, you said one's on Schoolhouse. Where's the other?
State Road.
State Road there. It's that big debon there right on the place there, the stone place there right down from CC. Who owns that now, CC? Got the old stone fish pond there. Your whitey bring place.
Yeah, the old cottage, right in front of the cottage.
Yeah.
Little buyers.
It's in there. It's in the yard there.
Yeah, below the stone house.
So it's fourteen hundred block?
Yeah.
No, thirteen.
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 It's on the west side of the road. You can see it.
I'm thirteen, okay. Okay.
And the other one you have, the bend is right there on Schoolhouse, this side of where Hoovers live, before you go around the bend there, Jody. Right up behind you, Max Lully used to live. One there that's really starting to lean out. Not gonna get no power lines, but it's gonna get communication lines if it goes down.
My only concern is, and I watch Ridge cringe every time you do this, mentioning it that you know that it's a controversial tree and something happens, you're on record with that tree being controversial.
Yes, and we went to the necessary people and utilities in regards to that, yes.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Lee, two quick...
Two quick questions. One, in the budget, I think, is a thirty thousand franchise fee. Is that what the, am I correct with that?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that what the, is that what the fee is going to be for a franchise?
It hasn't been, I don't think it has been determined yet.
Yeah, I don't know where you get that.
That's a ballpark figure.
About the ballpark figure, yes. Nothing cast and stuff.
We have to, we have to set the budget for next year. It's going to be income. We have to take an educated guess of what we're going to make.
And a second quick question. Settle an argument, Clint Stanley and I. You touched on the comprehensive plan about agricultural land and then turning that into clean and green. Is there a tax advantage to turn it to clean and green after it's agricultural?
No, anybody, you can have a farmland, you can have farmland out here, leave it zoned residential or anything like that, you know, you could put it in clean and green.
No, that's not what I meant. The question is, if it's agricultural already and you turn it clean and green, does it lessen your taxes?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the purpose of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, and it don't have to be zoned agriculture to get that advantage.
Correct.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be.
So who would rightfully?
I think I was.
The only disadvantage is you're allowed, I think, two acres a year on clean and green to build housing without having to pay the back taxes, and I'm pretty sure that's the way that...
You were right when you said though earlier, that if you change it back, you do have to pay that tax back.
Yeah, you have to pay taxes, but I think you were allowed one lot or two acres a year in the clean and green program that you can do that without paying the back taxes on seven years.
Correct.
That's correct. So you can still build on clean and green ground and lessen the amount of acreage that you're going to have, yes.
I shouldn't say that. That's a, my dad has landed by township, so I was asking him, yes, that's...
Same thing, and that's the way I understand. Now, if you want to take the whole farm, beg go, or beg a hunk of ground, you're gonna pay back taxes seven years on the whole thing.
Correct, yes.
Huge amount on it.
Doesn't have to be ten acres or more?
What's that?
Doesn't have to be ten acres or more for clean and green?
Yes, that's correct.
Not necessarily. They actually put a requirement in as to revenue off of the property.
And then, then the confusion came in today about an agriculture secure area. It had nothing to do with it. The gentleman called me today was really, I don't know where he got it, but he was really concerned, and he had a legitimate concern, because he has large portions of the ground in Penn Township.
We don't have to worry about that, do we?
What's that?
I mean, something would be said if something was gonna be changed, correct?
Yeah, oh, yeah. You gotta go through hearings. You gotta go through that process, you know. I mean, if anything's gonna be changed, you gotta, you gotta go through all that. You know, it's just like, the only option that you have today to keep it guaranteed is the route that the robbers went with their farm to have preserved, and same thing I'm doing. It's gonna be, and it don't affect nobody else that way. You yourself have the choice to preserve it, and you're gonna, you're not gonna be able to, if you got any plans in the future of driving money off of it, well, you're not gonna get it. Although you can set aside out of a hundred and sixty acre farm like I'm sitting there with, I can take fifty acres out of that and keep that for development if I choose. Don't have to put it all in. They got a certain amount. I think I'll allow fifty if I wanted it. But we've got to put the whole parcel in, and then you're allowed one dwelling wanted after that. So that's all I have. Anything else?
I just have an answer to Jody's question from the budget meeting. You wanted to know the difference between the 2012 and 2013 police budget minus the vehicle? Thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Thank you. I have one thing. I had asked before if there had been a permit issued to Mr. Linker to operate a business, and I was told no, and I believe he was in. There was some discussion. What's the status on that?
Mr. Linker. It had... Yeah.
I have two different, one from September 27th and the other one from Lenny from October 22nd.
Yes.
Okay. That's from Lenny. Neil up at the county, when we sending the letter, asking about it. He says the original ENS plan is on file up there, and that he took our letter as a complaint, and he went out to talk to them, to Mr. Linker, and that there was to be no more disturbance done. The fill at the culvert was supposed, it's supposed to be cleaned out, and the silt fence on the west side needs to be redistributed. He was supposed to have a meeting on October 14th with Mr. Linker. He was supposed to contact me. Neil did not.
Neither did he contact me.
Okay.
I called as an individual before the township even contacted him. I'm upstream from that culvert, already dealing with sinkhole issues. That culvert is a problem. That whole thing is a problem. So there's been nothing back from Mr. Imes?
No.
I'll be on the phone to him.
And I will say that I've been here when Helen's tried to call Mr. Imes, and we have not got a response back from him.
What property is that, CC?
Right across from me. Used to be the woods. Now it's a dump. The big fill lot. Now they're putting on the fill.
Yeah.
And he's not the only one putting fill in there. You can, you can sit there as soon as it gets dark at night, and the pickup trucks with the trailers come rolling in. People are doing it without approval. I don't know if they have approval or not. Now, I don't appreciate dump trucks slamming their tailgates at seven o'clock on a Saturday morning either. Or decent trucks sitting there running all night long at the estate of property, but that's...
County's the one that issued him that, that he could start.
Yep.
That's correct.
But does he have a permit to operate a business?
Nope.
Nope.
So what can we do about this?
You saw Lenny's letter advising me how you want me to go about it.
What would we do to anybody else that opens a business that doesn't have permission? CC, does he really have a business there? He sells topsoil out of there. They got a center over there, and they're good pickup trucks. He does not sell topsoil out of there.
You check the phone number. It's not out of there. He doesn't sell out of there. That's a storage hole area.
It's just a holding...
People come in there to pick it up, but he does not sell out of there.
So he doesn't collect the money there? But he still has the product there? He still sifts the ground there? The ground leaves there in private vehicles and/or dump trucks? Does this not constitute a business? That's a cell phone number.
Yeah, he's not, he's not conducting business out of the property there. It's a hole in there.
You could say, "I live here because my cell phone is here. It's not at home." What's the difference?
Why don't you ask him? Call him and ask him.
That's where the product is.
Because you don't call him and ask him things.
If we have rules that everybody else has to play by, I think everybody should play by them. Why should he be any different?
Have Lenny research some more?
Call him and ask him. He probably has permits in or in for anything he's doing.
Ah, he obviously doesn't. Helen just said he doesn't have a permit.
Not here, but he has permits to do what he's doing to the state.
Does he have an HOP for that?
Call him and ask him. He told you that the last time he was here in a meeting. He told you, "Call him. Don't talk behind you." He told you that the last time when he looked right at you and told you to call him instead of complaining.
No, he didn't just look at me.
He said, "Here, I said, I want to tell you that night to call him."
At that point, I had not contacted the county. I was not the one under the gun that night.
Helen, keep trying to see Mr. Imes. We need that information back from him, okay, in regards to that. See where we're at. So you don't overreact to something that we don't know what they've said or what they've done or what permits he has or what he hasn't. But we do need response back from Mr. Imes.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
That is Mr. Imes.
He is the county conservation, one of the people who maintains stormwater, and what else does he do?
Well, the ENS.
Yeah.
He reports to somebody.
Yeah, he talks to, oh, God, what's his name up there?
Todd Brackovich?
Yeah, that's it, Brackovich.
Call Todd.
Okay.
You'll get Todd.
Yeah. Yep.
Hey, we'll follow up on it, see what we come up with. We do need some correspondence back from them. If there ain't nothing else, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Budget.
Oh, well, they already set the date.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You decided Tuesday. What date is that?
That would be the 12th of November.
At six thirty? Already did?
Twelve?
Six thirty.
Second.
Okay, motion made for the second. All those in favor, give it something saying aye. Aye, 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 so work.